So I have been informed by the town clerk that we have met the form requirements, so we will be able to conduct the town's business this evening. Again, thank you for coming out. It's good to see everybody here tonight on a rainy night. Just to go over a few housekeeping things, just to get everybody clear on how we're going to proceed this evening. There's 29 articles. I do anticipate some debate and some discussion on some of these articles. Registered voters should be seated in the center. If you're a non-resident, you should be seated to the outside. Everyone should have received a clicker when they reported in this evening. We're going to be using these for voting this evening. We will... Motions will be read at the center here at the microphone. So if you're going to make a motion for Article One, I ask you to come to the microphone, please, read the motion. Once the motion has been read and seconded, please hand me the paper copy of the motion so I can review it and turn it over to the town clerk. And then we will open the floor for debate and discussion, and then we'll move for a vote. Once we move to a vote, I will call for the town clerk to open the vote. I'll wait about roughly 15 seconds, and then I'll announce 10 seconds, which will give you 10 more seconds to cast your vote. And then, once the vote is closed, the totals will appear on the screen behind me. I am on a pedestal this evening, so hopefully everybody can see everything behind me. I'll duck out of the way if you can't, but you should be able to see the totals on the screen behind me. Please remember that when you're using this, if you think you hit the wrong button, it's only going to record your last press before we close the vote. So you can push this button 30 times, it's only going to record the very last time that you hit it before we close the vote. If you are going to ask a question, or you want to ask a question of a finance committee or some member of the town, I'd ask that you could please come to the center. If you're handicapped or elderly and you can't make it to the center, that's fine to stand at your seat and just ask that you stand, announce your name, and speak loud and clear so everybody can hear you. We don't have a huge crowd tonight, so I think even if you're at your seats standing, we should be able to hear you clearly. The same goes for me. If you can't hear me, if I'm speaking too fast, or you need clarification, just put a halt to me. I will do my best to recognize everybody. I can pretty much see throughout the whole audience here, so we should be good to go. Before we get started, I just want to announce also that we are both being video and audio taped this evening for the whole entire meeting. And I've also been asked by the board's selectman chairman if he could address the audience tonight before we begin. So I will turn it over to Mr. Lee. I will step aside, sir.
Well, just in a quick note, I want to thank everybody here for being here tonight. I also want to thank the board for working together and doing all this work, so many hours, you know, into this, and we have a great team working on. And we've been doing this for many weeks now. We've got open meetings, everybody's welcome, and you're even, you know, even welcome to come, welcome to work with the town hall, or being at Bull's Theater like some of us we are, and hopefully we can get this opportunity. Thank you.
Okay. So, before we get started this evening, I wanted to do a voice vote to recognize the town administrator, Mr. James Ferreira. I do think he's going to be called upon to speak this evening, and since he's not a resident, he has to be recognized by the audience tonight. So I'm going to make a motion that we recognize Mr. James Ferreira to be allowed to speak this evening during the meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. All right. Is there anything else the board would like to say before I get started, or we're good? Okay. So with that being said, I will await a motion on Article One, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $425,000 to stabilization.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion's made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Thank you.
Yes.
Hi, Anne Vangel. I'd like to know how much money there is in free cash.
The certified free cash number for fiscal year '25 is $1,288,587.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. All right. Lori, are you set? You ready? Okay. Will you please open the vote? Close the vote, please. The motion carries. It's on the bottom, Lori, actually, to the bottom right.
It's on the bottom, but if it passes, that top bar at top is green, so you know by looking at the color. If it were to be denied, that top bar that says, it says pass right up top.
Yep. Good. Thank you. All right. I will await a motion on Article Two, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $275,000 to capital stabilization.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. We will move to a vote. Lori, are you ready? Open the vote, please. 10 seconds. Close the vote. Motion passes. Excuse me. I will await a motion on Article Three, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $15,500 to selectmen matching grant line for the purpose of covering matching funds for two recently awarded state grants.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Anne Vangel again. Could you just tell us briefly, very briefly, the awarded state grants are?
Yes, thank you, Anne. That's a great question. We received two grants from the state. One is for the Community One-Stop Program for Growth, and that was for $96,000 for the engineering and design project on Pulaski Street that has a $10,000 match requirement. And the other state grant that we received is from the FY '25 round of Community One-Stop Growth for the zoning bylaw update, and we received a grant from the state for $49,500, which requires a $5,500 match on behalf of the town.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you just touch briefly, briefly, on the zoning bylaw update? Just briefly? Like, we're paying for a zoning bylaw update?
Sure. Yes, so, yeah, that is a grant in that we are going to be probably working with our part... planning partners at Central Mass Regional Planning Commission to commission a overhaul of our zoning bylaws. There'll be public participation encouraged, there'll be public meetings, and we'll be going over all of the current zoning bylaws of the town that needs an update for some time now.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. Lori, are you ready? Open the vote, please. 10 seconds. Close the vote, please. Motion passes. I will await a motion on Article Four, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $8,200 to vocational educational transport... transportation line for an increase in transportation costs for an out-of-district student.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Okay. Lori, are you ready? Well, open the vote, please. 10 seconds. Close the vote. Motion passes. I will await a motion on Article Five, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $3,000 to pay for staff training slash employment... employee professional development.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
Carol Lee Soltis Warren. Is there a certain department, Bev Soltes, staff training?
Thank you, Bev. So the question that Bev Soltes posed was, is there a specific department that this staff slash professional development training is going to be geared towards? We're trying to gear it towards all departments. There's a need for employees, especially on the administrative side, to understand Excel in some of the administrative offices. So we're looking to send some individuals out to get some training on some Excel, as well as some professional development for all staff for possible anti-discrimination and sexual harassment training as well for staff in the future. So we would like to have some money reserved. As you may recall, we've had this article on last year. We didn't use all of the money because... we didn't use any of the money because we were able to find resources to provide training for free. Those resources are getting tougher and tougher to find. So we're asking for the town to consider putting some money aside to train our staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
John Beeson Warren. I'm just questioning the amount of $3,000. What kind of training are you giving $3,000? It's, I mean, Excel, I understand, but that should be a prerequisite for shaping higher positions than what is required.
So, Excel training is not... is not free. So we would have to send staff to get this training. Some staff need some touch-ups on Excel. Some are more proficient than others, and we would like to... we would like to provide professional development for all town employees. You know, I mentioned also anti-discrimination, anti-sexual harassment training. Those trainings are important because without those trainings, you know, we could wind up paying out a very large insurance claim or paying out a very large settlement. So those are very, very important trainings that we should always have for all staff in a professional organization.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. So the request has been, can you guys, residents, please try to use the microphone if you can get to the microphone, or definitely try to raise your voices and be clear. If you can't get there, it's fine, I'm, you know, handicapped elderly, of course. Yes, ma'am.
Karen Dusty, employee of the town. I think we should vote on this because being an employee, I think it's very important to learn different things and to be able to have... we have had safety shooter, Alice, I think they call it, and we talked about having self-defense classes. We're mostly ladies in that building, and it would be nice to be able to be able to have self-defense, and this money could possibly go to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. We're going to move to a vote. Ready, Lori? Open the vote, please. 10 seconds. Close the vote. The motion passes. Can I have a motion for Article Six, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from the Wage Classification and Compensation Study article, originally voted at the annual town meeting on June 13, 2024, Article Number 21, the sum of $20,000 to pay for the updating and modernization of the town's website.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. Okay.
Now, I want... what's the main goal of the update? What are you planning to do for the website?
So, what we're trying to do is bringing it up to some modern-day standards. The current website, the model from Civic Plus is not working for the town. It is currently not ADA compliant. There's some, you know, significant issues with staff trying to post things to the website. We're trying to be as much as we can transparent to the public, and so our goal here is to create a website that will engage more citizen participation.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
David Kelly Warren. I just asked, perhaps you could describe a little bit about your plans to modernize the website, what your goals are, your process to do that at this time. Have you hired a web designer, or will you do it in-house? This sort of question, please.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. We have not hired a web designer. We don't... we do not plan to do it in-house. We will be hiring somebody if this article does get approved. You know, we would like to see, you know, pages that, you know, could potentially have our videos, our boards and commission videos already on there so people can easily access that. We'd like to see, you know, boards having the ability to post to their pages, you know, easily and seamlessly. We're looking... also, we're probably going to be having a participation and a questionnaire go out to the residents as to what they would like to see also changed on the website because it's your website at the end of the day. So, you know, we're trying to move in that direction. We were very thankful that we were able to get a grant this year to complete our wage compensation study. So we were able to save the town $20,000. So what we're looking to do is, since the town was so kind enough to give us the $20,000, we're looking to repurpose that $20,000 and put it back into an updated, modernized website for the town. Thank you.
Go ahead. Jim, do you have an administrator or point of contact, or someone you expect to run this program? Is it still in planning stages at this point? Is it going to be...
Yes, it's totally in its planning stages.
Mr. Nason?
Yes, John Nason again. I was just wondering, the town already voted to allocate this $20,000 for wage classification study. Is that being abandoned now? And we're... I mean, it was just a couple months ago, we voted in that $20,000 for that purpose. Now we're abandoning that purpose? Is that right here?
No, no. No, we're not abandoning that purpose. Like I just said, we were very fortunate. We applied for a state grant, and we were... we got a state grant, and so we're using state grant funds to complete the wage classification study, which is currently ongoing. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Lori, are you ready? Open the vote, please. 10 seconds. Close the vote, please. The motion passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $4,000 to the Workman's Compensation Insurance Line to cover any potential costs associated with the town's annual workman's comp audit.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on Article Seven? Seeing none. Lori, are you ready? Open the vote, please. 10 seconds. Close the vote. The motion passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $4,000 to the Workman's Compensation Insurance Line to cover any potential costs associated with the town's annual workman's comp audit.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on Article Seven? Seeing none. Lori, are you ready? Open the vote, please. 10 seconds. Close the vote, please. The motion passes. I have a motion on Article Eight, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend Article Four, Section 2B, Capital Planning Committee of the Town, overturning general bylaws by making the following changes to the second line with the amendment to bold and deletion and strikeout as follows. All town officers, boards, and committees, including the selectmen and school committee, shall by December 1 of each year give to the committee on forms prepared by it information concerning all anticipated projects requiring town meeting action during the ensuing five years.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion regarding this article? Yes, ma'am.
So the fiscal year goes from the 31st of July to June 1st?
No, Marcy. So what this is, is just an update of our capital planning bylaw, and so this is just for capital budgets for departments to submit to us, to the capital planning committee.
So they're going to feel it's more detrimental to push it forward, or it would be in their favor to have...
It's giving them a little more time instead of... instead of September, having it due December 1 for departments to get their capital budgets to us, to the capital planning committee.
And then when do you have to have them to... I'm sorry, I didn't mean to speak over you. When do you have to submit them to the state for approval? Don't you have to submit?
No, we don't have to submit those to the state. It's all run for the capital planning committee.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Lori, are you ready? Open the vote, please. 10 seconds. Close the vote. The motion passes. Can I have a motion on Article Nine, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 53, Section 18B, which pertains to how public information for local ballot questions, including proposition two-and-a-half tax overrides and debt exclusions, may be provided.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Leona Rubel, I'd like a detailed explanation of this because anytime override mentioned or two-and-a-half, it makes me very nervous.
Yep. Thank you, Leona, and that's a very fair question. I'm proud to stand up here today. We're not needing a two-and-a-half override at this time, okay? We don't need that. There's a possibility in the near future that we may have a debt exclusion question, and in anticipation of a debt exclusion question, we are asking the townspeople for a local acceptance of a state statute that would allow us to send out to every taxpayer a summary of what is being proposed, as well as a statement that would propose what some of the positives are, as well as some of the challenges are. So it would allow us to have the statement, as well as a positive and challenges affecting that question, and that would be information going to the registered voters.
Thank you. Beverly?
Yeah, and we cannot do that right now unless there's a local acceptance of this statute.
But we've never had... Beverly Soltes from Lauren, we've never had this brought up, so are you preparing us this two-and-a-half override for the safety complex?
No, no.
That's the way I feel.
No, no. So the question is for preparation for a two-and-a-half tax override or... and a debt exclusion. So if you're doing either one of those, you have to have this local acceptance to send out information to the taxpayers ahead of that. So this is just to send out information ahead of that. Again, we are nowhere near a two-and-a-half override, or nor do we expect there be a two-and-a-half override anytime soon. We have a potential of a debt exclusion question in the near future, and we're just preparing for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Javier Melendez, so, three of the town administrators. Is this basically like when we have the state election, the state sometimes sends out that little flyer that says, here's question one, positive, negative, negative two, and this is basically just allowing the town to do it?
That is... that is very similar, Javier, very similar. Secretary Galvin would send out those booklets saying that there's some questions on the ballot. I'm sure everybody got one. There were several questions on the ballot this year. It's very similar to that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Lori? Open the vote, please. 10 seconds. Close the vote, please. The motion passes. Can I have a motion on Article 10, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $25,000 to pay for the costs associated with a new roof at the senior center.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there any discussion regarding this? Yes, sir.
May I ask, David Kelly Warren, has the new roof been installed on the senior center, and are we raising funds to pay for it, or is it yet to be done?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. No, the roof has not been done. We're looking to get it done, and I do have to thank Representative Todd Smola for coming through on an earmark of $50,000 for this town to address some of the issues in the roof at the senior center. So along with this $50,000 earmark and a little bit of money from the town, we can get a new roof that is needed and has been identified as a need to replace.
Yes, ma'am.
Amy Loganbuehl, has this gone out for bid yet, so we actually know that we have enough to cover it?
No, this is not going out to bid. We're not anticipating it going out to bid until we know we have funds. We have some rough estimates that we are looking at, and we're trying to get this out to bid as quickly as possible.
Yes, ma'am.
A roof is going to cost $75,000?
You have to pay prevailing wage. So prevailing wage drives up the cost. Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
I might contract myself. I might have a burial roof installed, and I would be able to... I'm pretty sure it's all of us except for me.
So what we're planning on doing is, obviously, we're hoping that it's going to be less, right? But we're planning for the worst. So we're planning that we hope that we don't have to come back here to ask the town for more money. We want to be able to start the project and complete the project. So we will be going out to bid. We're hoping that the bids come in much less, and we'll go from there. But if somebody knows of a company, I would recommend that they watch the town's website for postings of the bid documents and encourage them to apply.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I was just curious if any of the numerous grants for the community, that the senior center received, any monies from any grants?
Yes. So right now, we just recently got a Green Communities grant, and in that Green Communities grant, it's going to pay for the weatherization and a new heating and cooling system at the senior center, and that was a state grant.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. Lori, are you ready? Open the vote, please. 10 seconds. Close the vote, please. The motion passes. I'll await a motion on Article 11, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $3,000 to Shepper Purchase Service Line to cover the additional monthly costs associated with the new phone system and increase internet speed at the Shepper Building.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I second you.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Lori, are you ready? Open the vote, please. 10 seconds. Close the vote. The motion passes. Can I have a motion for Article 12, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Motion 12 to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $10,000 to liability insurance line to cover the cost of a deductible claim for the police department.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion remains seconded. Is there any discussion regarding this article? Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
David Kelly Warren, we want $10,000 for a liability insurance claim? Can we ask what caused this claim, and what is the result of it?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Unfortunately, this is a litigation matter. We cannot discuss it in great detail. This is a professional liability claim, and our deductible is $10,000.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
If I may, sir, we are currently in a litigation where the town is being sued because of actions through the police department. Is that what I'm to understand?
Yes.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Laura, you ready? Open the vote, please. Ten seconds. Close the vote. The motion passes. Can I have a motion for Article 13, please?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to change the Board of Assessors from being elected to appointed by the Board of Selectmen.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I second you.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Leona?
Leona Rubel, if you can't get people to run, how are you gonna get people to appoint?
Thank you, thank you, Leona. You know, it's very difficult, okay? A lot of people don't like politics. A lot of people don't like to run for office. And I can understand that, and we can appreciate that. These positions of assessors are critically important to the town's financial stability. They have to pass specific state certifications, and we need to have the ability to appoint if necessary. We have a great group right now. I see Deb Hardy and Jack Feeney, two individuals here. One was a write-in, and the other was appointed. There was nobody that took out papers the last time around. This is a serious matter. We need to have the ability to appoint. Now, this does not give us the ability to appoint tonight. What it will give us the ability to do, to put it on a ballot in May. So ultimately, it will be up to the residents of the town, the voters of the town, to decide this question.
Thank you. Beverly?
Now, at these positions, the assessors and the three-year and the one-year, would that be advertised in the newspaper? And is there a... Besides the Board of Selectmen, do you have a human resource or hiring committee that will, you know, interview these people? Is that... Because, you know, like you said, Mr. Ferrara, I mean, there was nobody running back in May. There were 352 blank ballots, and that was for the three-year, and I think it was 356 for the one-year position. I mean, we have to do something.
Thank you, thank you, Bev. So I would anticipate, I'm hoping, that the current members of the Board of Assessors would stay on, and they would be appointed. And as they may retire, of course, it would be posted like any other position that would be available in town.
Thank you.
And we, yes, we do have a committee, a hiring committee internally, that vets people and makes recommendations to the selectmen.
The only thing that bothers me about things like this is somebody's wife's second cousin, twice your neighbor, who's looking for a job, and that's a death threat.
And we always look for the best and the brightest.
What was that?
I just have a question about this. Now, if we vote no, is this a dumb deal, or is it gonna show up in May anyway, on the...
No, no. It narrowly got defeated in June by four votes. This is giving the town the ability to put it on a ballot. Ultimately, the voters and the taxpayers are still gonna have the final say in this, in May.
Sir?
Sir, I'd like to make a motion to change the article language, and the change that I would like to make is, if no assessor is voted in the yearly election, the selectman may then appoint for a period of time TBD, one year or the three-year period. So this would change the article. It would still need to go to a vote in May, but it allows, it gives the selectmen at least a tool, since people are complaining that no one's running, then they at least have that tool in their toolbox to keep the town running forward.
Thank you, Javier. I'm gonna let town council chime in if we can.
Hello, Mr. Moderator. My name is Jeffrey Blake, and thank you, everybody, for having me here. A little bit of a different setup, so sorry. I'm a little timid coming out here. I've heard what you've said. Chapter 41, Section 1A, B, and C address how you go from an elected to an appointed, and vice versa. And in my opinion, what you're asking to do is not allowed by state law. So I think you're gonna have to vote on whether or not to do it or not, rather than do it with some contingencies. So I think that the amendment that you've requested is against state law.
Can we get a confirmation on that, and then vote on it in May? Because that's... And I understand, you're the legal guy, you know the law, but hearing that the town, some people might vote no to this, so then it essentially kills this, and then we don't have an answer to the assessor problem. So I would just like to get this confirmed, if we're gonna do this in May for the big vote then. Because this is just voting to put the question on the ballot in May. So if that's the case, I'd like to see the question on the ballot in May have this tool, either way.
The statute itself provides what the ballot question has to be, and it's constrained by law. And the additional contingency language that you've put in there is not in the statute. Therefore, it can't go on the ballot.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Joseph Chuck, I have a question about how does it work now? Because you mentioned that there is currently one appointed position there. So if there's nobody running for the position, and there's a vacancy, do you currently have the ability to appoint somebody in that situation?
Yes. If there's a vacancy, and nobody ran, and there's no qualified write-in, then yes, the selectman would have the authority to appoint.
So I guess my question would be, why would you need this article in order to... This would completely take away the ability for somebody to run for that position, and it would, from now on, be an appointed position altogether?
I'm sorry? Yes, go ahead.
The reason we have someone appointed now, or two that were elected, is because somebody else resigned after the election. The person that's currently appointed, anyone that's appointed to an elected position is only appointed until the next election, and then that individual would also have to run. So the person we have now is only appointed until May 7th, whatever the next Tuesday is in 2025, and then it becomes, it is an elected position still. So the fact that they keep saying they have someone that's appointed is not saying we don't need this. Anyone that gets elected, appointed to an elected position, is only temporarily appointed, or they must run if they want to set that person up. After running, they decide not to, because they would have to pull papers to get on the ballot, but that spot is on the election. Anyone else can also pull papers and run against that individual if they wanted to, until that term is done. So it's still there to be confusion, because they're stating that there is an appointed individual. Appointed because the person who was elected resigns his life.
Correct, but if there's nobody that runs, you still have the ability to fill that vacancy by appointment?
Only until the next election. It would only be...
Correct.
So the answer is yes?
Yes, they did.
That was my question. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Deborah Hardy, Five Rennels Road. I just want to say, I was a write-in for the assessor position, and I strongly believe that the assessor should be appointed. From my understanding, it would be for a three-year position, and the position takes so much to learn. One year just isn't enough. The office keeps going through people, and we need people there for three years to really understand and do honor to the clients, to be able to serve the residents. And one year isn't enough, and that knowledge is lost, and we end up to keep paying for people to learn that position. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
David Kelly Warren, I understand very much the need to have people in this job. It's an important job, but I think it's also important that we understand there is a division of power in government. Different branches hold different powers, and it's very important that we maintain the structure of our government so that we can maintain this balance of power. If we take an elected official and make it an appointed official, you no longer get to select that person.
They do.
It is an assessor's position. They set property values. We set the tax rates, but now the assessor would set the property values. Your taxes could be raised without your approval, should the assessor decide taxes go up. I could be wrong about this, but I still believe that the structure of government needs to be maintained. The integrity of the government needs to be maintained, and the assessor should be an elected position, not appointed by the board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Throwing Mr. Moderator to the previous speaker. You had indicated, or at least you stated, that the assessors could make your taxes go up. In order for, the way the taxes are figured in a town is, there is a process, a valuation process, which is done and has to equate to fair cash value, your fair market value. That's the big number of how much the land in your town is worth. Then you, here, make a determination as to what monies you spend. It's here. It's the legislative body. As you can see, you're the ones that are making that determination. Once we find out how much we have for value of the total amount, and then the amount we need to raise, we do math, and it comes up with a tax rate. So the assessors do not have anything, they do not raise or lower your taxes. What they do is, every three to five years, they do a valuation, and if your value goes up, and the tax rate stays the same, you might pay more money. But everybody else's would, and presumably, the tax rate would go down. So the big determination here is right here. How much you want to spend at town meeting will have the impact on what your taxes are, up or down.
Can I follow on to the balance of power here?
Raise it up, John.
The problem is, why can't we get people to run for office in this town? What's stopping these people from... I mean, I used to be in many offices in town, and I've basically given up. I still have a few boards, but the bottom line is, why aren't people wanting to get involved in decisions like this? And I agree 100% with the balance of power. We need that balance of power to keep everything level.
Yes, ma'am.
This is for town council. What does the Mass. General Law say about us voting, making a motion to take an appointed position and make it an elected position? Is that illegal as well?
Hello, Mr. Moderator. No, as I had indicated before, the statutes, it's Chapter 41, Section 1A, B, or whatever, they allow you to do it both ways. They allow you to...
I said, "Was it legal, sir?"
No, I didn't.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, misunderstood you.
They allow you to go elected to appointed, and they also, if it's an appointed position, they allow you to go from appointed to elected with some qualifications. But what I said, though, is that there is a statutory subscribed ballot question. So you pass it here, it goes to your ballot, and under the law, the ballot question has to say X, Y, and Z that's found in the statute. The gentleman was proposing that the ballot question say X, Y, and Z, and A, B, and C, and that's why I said I don't believe that that's legal under the statute. But you can go from appointed to elected, and elected to appointed, same process.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Chief?
For what it's worth, I'd just like to add a comment from someone that works here in town and kind of sees the inner working of what goes on. I think there's some, I don't wanna say misunderstanding, but when it comes to elected and appointed positions. Elected positions are very important, okay? The assessor's position is a very important position for, as Mr. Ferrara has pointed out. One of the other questions on tonight's ballot was about training for our employees here in the town, and it was said that they should have pre-qualifications already to be hired by the town. That's one of the inherent problems with elected positions, all right? So the reality is, is that I understand the balance of power, but if you have a position that is inherently important in the town, okay? If you don't have any minimal qualifications to do that, and it's an elected position, you could run into major problems with that. And when it comes to an appointed position, from my perspective, what I've seen over the last few years, especially with Mr. Ferrara as our town administrator, all of these positions have been well-vetted, okay? All of these positions have had interview processes, across the board. They've had qualified individuals come in with required documentation, required skills, and knowledge to be able to do certain positions in this town, and I think that's very important, okay? To make sure that we get people that are truly qualified to be in those positions, because we've certainly seen, and we have some very talented and gifted people that are elected positions in this town. I don't want to take that away from them. We're very lucky that we have some of these positions in this town that are elected. However, there are some times where qualifications mean a whole lot. And right now, the way I've seen interviews done, and this is not gonna stop anyone that has an interest in being an assessor from applying for an open job. They just simply need to come in, do the interview process, show their qualifications, and they get appointed. So I understand the balance of power side of it, but please know that the town has made great strides in changing the way that employees are being interviewed and vetted so that the town has better representation in some of these things. And again, I go back to that training thing. If you're gonna say they should have minimal qualifications, we shouldn't fund training for the employees, then these people need to have minimal qualifications. And I just think that that's a point that should be made.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone else? Mr. Rubel?
This is fine, but then what office is next? There's a lot of elected positions in this town, and if this is, this will start just like Domino's. The next office will say, "Oh, we're gonna appoint somebody." The next office will go to appoint somebody. You don't have to vote.
Again, tonight is just to put it on the ballot. This is not the nail in the coffin. People are gonna have an opportunity to exercise their right in May at the ballot box. We're trying to move in a model of the professional, not the politician.
Sir?
I'd just like to state that I do not mean in any way to disparage the fine gentlemen on the board here. I know they do a great job. They work very hard. We also need to remember that these men will pass on from this job and find other jobs, and when you make this change to our, in effect, town charter, that this is now an appointed position, the next group of men may not be as respectable, as responsible as the gentleman on the board today. When this law gets changed, it's, in effect, changed forever. So I just think the town should be very cautious, and the citizens in particular, very much aware of the consequences of a decision to take an elected position and make it an appointed position, particularly where the town already possesses the power to appoint to fill the position if no qualified candidate wins it in an election. Thank you.
Thank you. One second.
I'm going to follow the rules of the town meeting. Is there a motion that we can make to vote?
Yes.
Motion to move the question?
Second.
So I have a motion, second, move the question. All those in favor? So once again, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If motion passes, so we're going to move to, we're going to cut off debate right now and we're going to move to the vote. Laura, are you all set? Open the vote, please. Ten seconds. Close the vote. Motion is defeated. Can I have a motion for Article 14, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Motion 14. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $19,000 to pay for a new town hall chime system, upgrades to the electrical wiring, and the disposal of the old system.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion is made in second. Is there any questions regarding this article? Yes, sir.
Pete Krasik. Right now, for town hall, taking a look at the town hall, the brickwork on, the fire escape down the side by the canal, looks like it's ready to fall off the building. There's trees growing up the backside, paint is falling off the building everywhere, and the chimney leans a little bit to one side. You heard about the chimes? I don't get it. The rest of the building's falling down? We're going to get rid of it and we build a new building, right? Yes or no?
Anybody? Thank you, sir. Mrs. Soltes?
Bev Soltes. There was an executive meeting September 26, 2024, and the discussion was about the town hall chimes and bells. So all of a sudden, we're interested in the chimes and the bells. Now, let's go back to 2021, when the building was going to collapse. I remember the police department had to be out of the building in 30 days. Then it was 60 days. And the bricks were going to fall down on the sidewalk and the clock tower was possibly falling onto the street and maybe injuring somebody. I mean, what has changed? The building inspector, I mean, she went through the building and she said the building is unsafe and its occupancy is prohibited. It should be unlawful for any person to enter such structure except for the purpose of securing the structure. So now, we want to, we don't want to put any money in the building, but we want to fix the bells. I don't get it. Do we have, what about the windows that haven't been replaced? We still have those somewhere, you know, just laying there. Do we? I don't know. Maybe we sold them.
Anyone else? Mr. Ferrera?
Thank you.
I'd like to hear from the finance committee because they did not approve this article.
Pardon me. Ray Capaco. I just put a candy in my mouth, so excuse me. Yeah, the finance committee considered this article and given the questions that have already been raised tonight, as well as the potential that a safety complex could be, is possibly coming in the future, we were dubious about the propriety to proceed with putting in a new system. So we were against it.
Thank you. Mr. Ferrera, do you want to say anything?
You know, this particular article, the selectmen had talked about, you know, they received some inquiries from individuals in town that enjoy the chimes and enjoy the heritage that the chimes bring. Currently, the chime system is not functional to be kept on a timer. We can't control it, we can't manipulate it currently. To replace the current system is about $15,000. There's a potential that it would need new wiring all the way up to the clock tower, which would be about another $3,000, as well as we would have to pay to dispose of the old chime system, which is quite extensive. We would have to dispose of that. So we're estimating that this project would be about $19,000 to complete.
Thank you. Ma'am?
So it's currently a mechanical system and you're going to replace it with a non-mechanical system?
So I'll clarify how the system works. The system is, it's a tape. So basically, there is no bell in the clock tower, okay? There's no actual bell ringing. All it is, is a recording. That recording, we can't adjust, we can't change, we can't do anything with. We just set the time of day and say, "Do it each hour." We can't change the volume, we can't do anything to it. So at night, when it's louder for some folks, we can't adjust that down for the public. It's very, the system is very outdated, all right? It plays the Westminster tone initially and then it chimes the hours.
Yeah, I live here, I know. Thank you.
Okay, so there's nothing we can do about that. That's the only way it can play, all right? A new system will give us better control of it in the volume. It will also allow us to make sure that different holidays, we play different tones. And it can keep the system going for years longer. And if we move, or we need to move it, we can take the system out and move it with wherever it goes next, all right? But right now, the old system is failing and we don't know how much longer it's going to last. So to keep the bells going in town, we just need to upgrade the system to something that's better controlled.
Thank you. Bev, Mr. Krasik?
Bev Soltes. Can't we just hire somebody to go up like at 8:00 at night and shut them off at 8:00 in the morning and turn them on for $19,000?
Thank you. Mr. Krasik?
The system, Bev, the system doesn't work that way, okay? If you shut it off, you got to reprogram the whole system again. You can't just tone it or turn it off or do anything like that. The system is very outdated. It's basically like an old eight-track system and you just program the time in and you say, "Go." That's it.
Mr. Krasik?
What you're saying is the system is unsafe and it's not functioning properly. That's what you're saying.
I never said unsafe in there. I just said the system is failing. There's nothing about the safety of the system. The system's just not going to work forever. It's been there since the 1970s and it is very outdated. If people want to continue to hear the town bells, we're going to have to upgrade the system, all right? Or they're just going to shut off and stop. They've been going for over 100 years and we like to continue with the tradition.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. Laura, are you ready? Open the vote, please. Ten seconds. Close the vote. The motion is defeated. Can I have a motion for Article 15, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Motion 15. I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into, ratify an agreement for payment in lieu of taxes, a pilot pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 45, as amendment by Section 61 of Chapter 8 of the Acts of 2021, on such terms and conditions and for a term of years as the Board of Selectmen deems in the best interest of the town for taxes attributable to a solar facility owned and operated by Cronin Road Solar, One LLC, or its affiliates. Assessors are assigned on land located at 355 Cronin Road, Warren Assessor's Bev, 10 Block 0, Lot 74, and further to authorize the Board of Assessors to take any such action as may be necessary to or convenient to carry out the vote taken hereunder.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion is made in second. Is there any discussion regarding this article? Yes, ma'am.
Could we have the short edition?
Maybe Mr. Ferrera could speak.
So upon working with our assessors, we have discovered that there was a pilot agreement that needed to come before town meeting to get authorized, and this is what we're bringing before you this evening.
Yes, ma'am.
Because there's over 10 solar facilities now and are they doing payment in lieu of taxes?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a new program for-
No, this is not a new program. This was a, this was one that was orchestrated back in 2019, 2020, somewhere around there that needs to get approval from town meeting, authorization from town meeting.
So what is the change in the verbiage as far as what the solar facilities that are in place now are paying in lieu of taxes and it's revenue to the town and it's lowering our taxes?
Correct.
So how would this help us, this change?
This is not a change. This is just authorizing the town to enter into this agreement.
The same agreement that we have with everybody else?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask, this is to build a new solar facility?
Yes, a small-
No.
No, this is an existing one.
It's an existing one, okay, very good, very good. And it's an agreement that's already been agreed to, you just need to approve it?
Yes.
And it's the opinion of the board that this is to the benefit of the town as opposed to simply taxing the developers?
That is the opinion, yes.
Rather than taxing payments in lieu of taxes?
Correct.
So verbiage makes it sound like it's to be determined, you know, for a period of years to be determined by the board or terms to be determined by, have those terms already been determined? Is the number of years already established? Or is this something still in the negotiation?
Yes, no, there is established, yep.
It's established?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Laura, are you ready? Open the vote, please. Ten seconds. Close the vote, please. Motion passes. Can I have a motion for Article 16, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $3,000 from medical insurance line to retiree medical insurance line.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion is made in second. Is there any discussion? Sir, no? Seeing none. Laura, are you ready? Open the vote, please. Ten seconds. Close the vote. Motion passes. Can I have a motion for Article 17, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I moved that the town vote to transfer $3,250 from the assessor's salary line to assessor's mapping line for additional fiscal year 2025 expenses in mapping services.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion is made in second. Is there any discussion regarding this? Seeing none. Laura, are you ready? Open the vote, please. Ten seconds. Close the vote. The motion passes. Can I have a motion for Article 18, please?
Thank you. I moved that the town vote to transfer $2,959 from the Assistant Assessor's Salary Line to Assessor Purchase Services Line to cover the additional costs for postage, $841, office supplies, $750, access to the municipal listing services, $348, employment advertising, $300, and pre-employment physicals, $720.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion is made in second. Is there any discussion regarding this article? Seeing none. Laura, are you set? Open the vote, please. Ten seconds. Close the vote. Motion passes. Can I have a motion for Article 19, please?
I move that the town votes to transfer $5,500 from the Assistant Assessor's Salary Line to cover the costs associated with the following services: Re-evaluation Purchase Services Line, $3,500, and $2,000 to Assessor's Appraisal Services Line.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion is made in second. Is there any discussion regarding this article? Seeing none. Laura, are you ready? Open the vote, please. Ten seconds. Close the vote. The motion passes. Can I have a motion for Article 20, please?
I move that the town vote to transfer $8,374 from Assistant Assessor's Salary Line to Assessor's Purchase Services Line for the following additional training: VEDAR, $799, CA Technology Mapping Software, $1,500, and Catalyst Pro, $6,075.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion is made in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Open the vote, please. Ten seconds. Close the vote. The motion passes. Can I have a motion for Article 21, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I moved that the town vote to transfer $15,000 from the following assessor lines: Assistant Assessor Salary Line, $7,012, excuse me, $7,712, Assessor Clerk Salary Line, $3,538, and Assessor Salaries Line, $3,750, to Assessor's Purchase Services Line for the following unanticipated fiscal year 2025 expenses for assessing consulting services and support services.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion is made in second. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
Excuse me, just a question on the issue. Is for expenses for assessing consulting services, supporting services, is this someone we're paying because we're shorthanded in the office or we're bringing an outside group or is this not this-
No, it's for training for the assessors.
Training for the assessors. Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Do we use a second party now for assessing? Like a second, does the town hire a second party?
A town has a independent assessor for the property and for the property values.
That we pay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Open the vote, please. Ten seconds. Close the vote, please. The motion passes. Can I have a motion for Article 22, please?
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion that the town vote to transfer from the Sewer Maintenance and OP Supplies Line the sum of $232.73 to pay the following sewer department prior fiscal year bills from Sherwin-Williams of $174.81 and $57.92.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion is made in second. Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion?
As everyone can see in the warrant, this takes a nine-tenth vote, and I strongly encourage everyone to vote for it.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Lori, are you ready? Open the vote, please. Ten seconds. Close the vote. The motion passes. Can I have a motion for Article twenty-three, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from the sewer retained earnings the sum of twenty-eight thousand dollars to pay for engineering services for an investigation for areas previously identified as surcharging per the Department of Environmental Protection Administrative Consent Order. The scope of this proposal includes the closed-circuit TV inspections of approximately six thousand one hundred and twenty-five linear feet of twelve-inch diameter sewer pipe.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion is second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
So is this being required by D E P to get this done? Is this like a penalty thing or something? So is this another stipulation from the town?
It, it is.
Yes, it is. Anyone else? Seeing none. Lori, are you ready? Open the vote, please. Ten seconds. Close the vote. The motion passes. Can I have a motion for Article twenty-four, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of five thousand dollars to the ambulance overtime line to cover many shifts due to staffing shortages or take any action relative thereto.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion has been made in second. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Is this a new bill? I mean, we give town meeting just a lot of the money.
No. No, so we, we've lost a full-time position, so we've been in the process of filling that position over the last couple of months. That position's now filled. That person is almost out of their orientation time, but in order, when we're down a full-time position, I have to incur overtime costs to be able to fill as many shifts as I can. Anyone else? Seeing none. Lori, ready? Did I yes? Open the question, please. Are you ready? So we're gonna open now? Okay. Ten seconds. Close the question, please. The motion passes. Can I have a motion for Article twenty-five, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to the sum of, the sum of ten thousand dollars to the advanced life support line item to cover the anticipated additional ALS calls.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion has been made in second. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
I don't think we had ALS. Is this for when we have the call ALS?
This is, this is for when we, we request a paramedic to town, yes. Sir?
Is there a reason we anticipate an increase?
This is actually bringing us to where the budget would have been aligned for last year's F Y twenty-four budget. I was asked at the time of the town meeting to keep the budget, this particular line item level funded, and that, that we could go for what was needed as an overage for November. I was asked to do that. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. Lori? Open the vote, please. Ten seconds. Close the vote. The motion passes. Can I have a motion for Article twenty-six, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of five thousand three hundred and forty dollars and seventy-five cents from Council on Aging Custodian Van Driver Salary Line to pay for an unexpected repair to the generator at the Senior Center.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion has been made in second. Is there any questions?
Can't use the green grant for that? Just kidding.
Really? Ms. Solstice?
We don't have a van driver?
Sharon?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Not at this time. We're still looking.
Anyone else? Seeing none.
That position is posted on the town's website, so if anybody's interested in, in a part-time position as a senior van driver slash custodian, please send us your resume.
Thank you. Lori, are you ready? Open, open the vote. Ten seconds. Close the vote. The motion passes. I'll await a motion for Article twenty-seven, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from the Senior Center Basement Bulkhead and Rear Exterior Door Replacement Article, originally voted at the annual town meeting on June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, Article twenty-six, the sum of eleven thousand dollars, to the Council on Aging Expense Line to assist with paying for the Senior Center Kitchen Upgrade Project.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion has been made in second. Is there any questions?
How did you pay for the bulkhead and the door?
That's gonna be coming out of a C B D G funds.
So we were very fortunate, C D B G had a little bit of excess monies that was not used.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Lori, are you ready? Open the vote, please. Ten seconds. Close the vote. The motion passes. I'll await a motion on Article twenty-eight, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer five thousand dollars from Receipts Reserve for Appropriation Highway Equipment Fund to the Highway Surplus and Auction Line Item.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion has been made in second. Is there any que- Yes, sir.
Town of Northfield to buy a ten-wheel dump truck, which is double the capacity of any truck we have right now, and I'm paying very little money for it. No, we're paying twenty thousand, but the truck's worth about forty-five, fifty thousand.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Lori, ready? Open the vote, please. Ten seconds. Close the vote. The motion passes. Can I have a motion for Article twenty-nine, please? Oh, I'm sorry. Wait, hold on. Mr. Fountain, I'm sorry.
So I think, you heard that, Jim? Yep, yep. Thank you, Mr. Fountain. So, in stabilization, after tonight's successful passage, we will have approximately two point four million dollars in stabilization, and in capital stabil- We'll have approximately eight hundred eighty-three thousand dollars in, in, in capital stabilization, the highest reserves this town has ever seen. That, that's into stabilization, that, that, that's stabilization, that's, that's, that's stabilization in, in, in capital stabilization. That is not free cash. We spent approximately ninety thousand dollars tonight. Approximately after this, this meeting, there'll be approximately four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So, last year, all free cash was not spent. There was approximately a, a little bit about a hundred thousand dollars that was rolled over into this year's free cash calculation, so we have not spent down free cash as in years past. We've rolled it over so that we can continue to invest in reserves and continue to take care of capital needs of the town.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Fountain, sorry for not seeing you. Yes, sir.
Can I ask you just a question? Mr. Ferreira, maybe you could tell us a little bit about the stabilization fund, the capital stabilization funds actually pay for, briefly, of course.
Sure. So stabilization is, is, is for a rainy day. So, you know, hopefully, we'll never have to tap into it, but the reality is, it's good to have it there. We won't have to borrow for money and pay high interest rates like everybody else does. We can pay cash. We have the ability to pay cash. This will also help us with bond rating, and the bond rating, and the credit agencies, when we go out to borrow for bigger projects like a public safety complex. So if we continue to be good financial stewards, if we continue to put money into reserves, the bond rating agencies, the credit rating agencies will take a look at this. And capital stabilization is for capital projects. So we have a cap, we have a new capital for, we formed a new capital improvement committee and capital planning committee. They've come up with a five-year capital budget, first time in a long time that the town has had a capital budget to address capital needs, and as we continue to address these strategic capital needs, we, we may tap into this, and then we, we also want to replenish. So the idea is, as you tap into capital, the capital, capital expenses, and it's tapping into this fund, the good practice, the best practice, is also to put money back into it, and we're gonna continue to do that.
Thank you. All right, folks, we're gonna move on to Article twenty-nine now. Lori? Motion.
I'm sure I'm tall enough. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section one ten A. Any public office in town may remain closed on any or all Saturdays as may be determined from time to time.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Yes, Ms. Solstice.
This would be for the occasional voter registration that is supposed to be on a Monday, but it's a Monday holiday, like Memorial Day, so that would bump it back to a Saturday. This would allow me to do it on a Friday instead of having to work on a Saturday if it's a holiday. It's only for a local thing. All state elections will still be Saturday voter registrations. It's just to allow, if it even comes up, to be closed. Surrounding towns have done it. The state talked to me about it. On Fridays, our building is pretty much, there are people inside anyways, working with the electricity on and whatnot. On Saturdays, it's just me in the building, the one or two times a year that it comes up.
Thank you.
It may not even come up, you never know.
Sorry.
Last year, our town meeting was on, our voter registration would have fell on a June nineteenth, which was a holiday, so instead of that being our voter registration, it was on a Saturday from nine to five, where nobody came and registered to vote anyway. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none.
Seeing none, give me a chance.
Come on back. Can I have that? Okay, seeing none. You have that, Lori? Open the vote. Ten seconds. Close the vote. The motion passes.
Can I make a comment before we close? On Article fourteen, in regards to the Town Hall Chime System, since it was voted down, is there going to be a, how do I wanna say, is this, are the selectmen gonna look for ways to fund this as they did with the keyless entry system, which we voted down, but they found money to do it anyway? That's all.
So we haven't even discussed anything. If it failed, if it fails and the system goes down, it goes down. There's nothing we can do about it. If the town wants to allocate money towards it later on, then we can get the system back up, but right now, if the system fails, we have no contingency on that. We also can't adjust it. We can't turn it, we can't turn it down, we can't adjust anything, we can't adjust the times. It is what it is, and it's just gonna remain the same.
I don't think, I think maybe you misunderstood a little bit. Like, this is eighteen thousand dollars, nineteen thousand. When the keyless entry got voted down by the town, the selectmen will get upon themselves to use ARPA funds to get keyless entry. Is this nineteen thousand dollars gonna come from somewhere where you guys just decided to use the money?
We haven't even discussed it. And the town voted not to allocate the money, not to get, not to get the system. We, we were able to use ARPA funds to acquire the system, which didn't require a town vote. But, again-
I'm sure the money could have been used for something else that the town did vote on.
All righty then.
So, so, can I say one thing?
Go ahead.
So the problem we ran into was, people leave office or leave a position, they don't return their keys, or they lose their keys. Now we have to re-core the locks, it's expensive, it's unsecure, so we felt that the best thing to do was go with this keyless now. If someone leaves or loses their badge, computer and it's done. And all it is, is a couple-dollar badge as opposed to rekeying and, you know, a whole hassle.
So, with, yes, so with that being said, I'd like to wish everybody a happy holiday. I'm gonna entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, so moved. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you, everybody.